Good evening. Let's go ahead and get started with the C- Siri City Council regular meeting of Monday, March 26, 2018. At this time, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember De Rosset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
It's not here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will move to the invocation by Lauren Gregory from the Victory Assembly of God.
Heavenly Father, we remember the words of our Lord Jesus that said, "Let the greatest among you serve." And so, we pray, God, that you'd guide us in serving the people and in their business. Lord, that you'd give us wisdom and grace that we might do what's best for everybody involved. Father, sometimes there's difficult decisions we make. I pray for wisdom and just your blessing on these meetings and that you'd guide us. We ask these things, Lord, in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We have one presentation this evening. It's a Measure L presentation by Stan Cog.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I just wanted to present you. I'm excited to be here tonight, this evening, to present you your first Measure L check. And it's over a million dollars, so it's pretty exciting. And I'm very happy to continue to work with your staff and making sure that you're spending this money for your roads. So, I wanted to present this check tonight to you and your council.
Great. Thank you.
The bank will take this. Go down and get your paper taken.
Well, all of you. If there's a way we can get all of you up.
Come on down.
Let's go.
Okay. Now, Darrell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today's a perfect day to celebrate the check that you just picked up because our Measure L project just kicked off construction as of today. If you see on what I've passed out to each one of you and on the overhead here, we've got multiple streets throughout the city. We're trying to spread the money out as best we can, not on just one or two individual projects, but between slurry seals and what we call cape seals, which is a rock base and a slurry seal placed on top of that. We're doing that throughout the community. As you can see here, Rose Avenue, 10th Street, also Stanislaw, those are getting cape seals because of thicker section. Palm, Oasis, and Pyramid are also getting cape seals. The other ones with just the simple hatch on it, Chilay Ramon, Verde Drive, Ferrari, El Dorado Drive, those will be slurry seals, a little bit thinner application, but it will still lengthen the life of each of those streets. Here's another section of town, Roding, 10th Street again, down at Don Pedro. A lot of these areas that are having some problems, this cape seal will extend the life, hopefully another 10 years on each one of these streets. And with the slurry seals, again, extending the lives on each one of those. And there's a, we even have one out there on the north side of town. We're trying to hit two, Chilay Way, with a couple of cul-de-sacs out there with a slurry seal. So, be aware where you're driving for this week and next week. There'll be a lot of construction going on in those streets. We're trying to keep everybody off out of their right of way so we can make the applications each one of those right of ways. Any questions you might have on those?
Any question?
We're real excited to get this underway. And next year's Measure L projects will be coming soon, so hopefully at the end of summer, we'll have another set of projects for you to look at as well.
Great. Thank you.
They just quit for the day. I told them I had to come to the council meeting. Let me out of my driveway.
You're lucky we didn't tow your car.
Okay. Next, we will move to citizens' communication. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, I do have a couple of speaker cards, so I'll call on those first. The first one is Joseph Macedo.
Good evening. Thank you, members. I'm here today on behalf of my wife. She'll be speaking after me. What happened to us is a tragedy. It should not be happening to people in 2018. My wife was recommended by her doctor to go seek treatment at a recovery facility. She wanted to be close to me because, and her son, which live in Manteca, so she was a caregiver for her father, which was in hospice. But she moved up here and went to Stanislaw Recovery Center. She went there. She introduced herself as a mental health patient, went through a whole day of assessments. One night at 10:30, my son knocks on my door and says, "Some counselor's on the phone. Mom has to leave there right now." Well, as you can tell, I'm handicapped. I don't have access to a car all the time. I couldn't go get her. So, apparently, they discharged her at 10:30 at night, under what I'm understanding. She was never a threat to her or anyone else, no weapons, no drugs. She was there under her doctor's recommendation for prescription medication. And the police officer kept saying, "Tweaker, tweaker." Anyway, I don't want to go into that detail because I wasn't there. So, as a mental health patient, she should have been 51, 50ed and given a hospitalization till they could determine what the problem was or given a referral to a shelter so she would be safe. No. She was escorted off the property by the Siri's police. Now, what happened here is I find very disruptive is when you go into treatment, you go in having anonymity against prosecution or somebody coming in and just taking you out of the facility. We have laws that protect that HIPAA, number one, because she was identified as a mental health patient. And two, under SP 42, anybody seeking treatment in a substance use program is protected while they're there. Even judges today allow people to go to treatment before they prosecute them for whatever reason it is. However, my wife was discharged and her Medi-Cal was used, was discharged, and that is another violation of the Health Code under Affordable Care Act. You cannot discharge a mental health patient or a substance abuse patient without the proper referral if you're using Medi-Cal funds, and she was there under Medi-Cal. So, that's a violation of Medi-Cal law under Affordable Care Act. As we see today, we have 12 million Americans suffering from addiction. Not everyone's out in the streets tweaking. And this gentleman, a peace officer, I will probably haven't given that much respect, kept disrespecting my wife, calling her all kinds of dignified names, telling me I should have beat her more, maybe to keep her in line. We do not treat our citizens this way, gentlemen, ladies. We do not do that today, especially, and I've gone to the Board of Supervisors and I have made a formal complaint to the BHRS and spoke at the Board of Supervisors last month, and I will be there tomorrow morning because I have soliciting the officers of Joseph Alioto from San Francisco to represent my wife. This is definitely a violation of her civil rights. And we've also contacted the State Medi-Cal Civil Rights Act, so we are following through this. Now, I'd like to pass the mic to my wife, please.
Okay. Regina? Okay. Do you want to?
Hi. Distinguished members of the board, your mayor too. Hi. Sorry, he got me a little upset. My name's Regina. Can I just start with this? I voluntarily checked myself into SRC. I'm from San Mateo County. I relocated up here a few years ago. My husband had a stroke. We lived in Salida. We had a nice house and a pool. And he had a stroke. We lost our health. Went to San Mateo to be a caregiver for my stepfather and get him on hospice. As he helped me take care of my mother, she died a couple of years ago. So, I'm having mental health issues, PTSD being majorly triggered. I've been on SSI for 18 years. I'm not a criminal. I don't have any felonies, any shoplifting. I'm not a tweaker. I do have a lot of injuries and brain traumas. I checked myself into SRC on advice of my psychiatrist in Redwood City, Dr. Bromley. I was on Ativan for anxiety, have anxiety disorders, and head traumas. And at the current moment, I had a fractured spine, and I wanted to prepare it for surgery. So, it was suggested by him that I go into maybe WRA to get off of this medication that he had been prescribing me for over a year. And my son and my husband are in Manteca at my mother-in-law's. He's had a stroke almost one year ago. And so, I went into SRC. My first time, I've never done anything like this before, and I wanted to prepare for the surgery so, because my stepfather's doing much better. He's still on hospice, but his place is livable, and he's doing great. He's put on weight. And so, anyway, there was a lot of things going on in there, like, you know, a lot of racial bullying and stuff. They call me Barbie, and, you know, I like things clean. I'm a little bit OCD, you know? I wasn't in there trying to use drugs or sneak drugs or have sex, but, I mean, I did report many rule violations, like, you know, the heater blasted me all night long in the face, and I couldn't sleep, having nightmares and stuff. And the exhaust fan was filthy, and it was dropping dirt. It didn't work, so I told the coordinator, and he really got ticked off. And called the maintenance guy down, and they went in three, four separate times. This thing still wasn't working, you know? He put a new one in. There's parts on the floor. I don't know. They were messing with me, but he was not very happy with me at all. And I'm like, you know, I'm sorry. I'll stop messing with you. But I reported multiple rule violations. I saw sex or prostitution going on out there. I tried to stay, what they say, stay in my own lane, but, I mean, I'm a mom. I have five kids. I have grandkids, you know? I mean, I like to clean and cook. Anyway, I wasn't in there for trouble. So, I feel like maybe this is repercussion for me, being put out at night, at 10:30 at night, as I was in bed doing homework, you know, doing lady things like face mask by myself. And then, they said that I called someone the N-word, and I never called anyone the N-word. I don't do that. Anyway, I was speaking with one, I asked for them, I'm a mental health patient. You can't just put me out on the streets at night. It's freezing. You have to wait till my family comes. They said, "This comes from the higher up. You know, you've got to go now." And it was two counselors, Isaiah and Regina. Regina wasn't very nice. Isaiah was like, "Oh, my God, I can't believe this is happening." He talked to my son. He said, "Your mom's not using." Excuse me. Talking to one officer, and I'm like, "I need the police to document. This is not a safe situation. This is dangerous." And, excuse me, I have asthma and allergies. This is why the heater was such a big thing for me. I was apartment manager in San Francisco, so I know code, and I'm like, "This has to work." So, he got really ticked off at me, really ticked off at me, the coordinator, Charles Jarnell. The counselors said I came from higher up, so I was, the officer's talking to him, and then some more officers come in. And the one officer, he flung the door, and he almost hit me, and I said, "Gosh." And he came over. He smashed my roses I got from family group, my husband and my son, and he picked me up by this coat, and off my feet, drug me out, and slammed my face and my body into the glass doors. And then, he picked me up, he body slammed me about five times on the ground, and then he stomped on me multiple times. I felt my rib break at that time. And I told them, and they called the ambulance. I kept begging for the ambulance. I saw my counselors staring and watching. I really learned some good things from some of the counselors there. I mean, you know, I'm an intelligent woman. I'm college educated. I never dreamed that I would be beaten by a police officer through my call for help for documentation, and I have a broken rib.
Can I have you finish up? We've got to the five minutes.
I stayed on the streets. I went into jail for about three, four days over the holiday. They said that I tried to do something to the officer. I didn't break any laws. I was never a threat to anyone, and I was beaten and body slammed. This officer had a red face. I don't know what was wrong with him, but there's something wrong with Burelier, Officer Burelier. And then, I was released at night from the jail.
Okay.
I don't have a criminal history at all, and I walked the streets for two days until I got to Salida where my husband, I was finally able to contact them. So, I was in the streets for two nights by myself.
I'm going to have to ask you to finish up.
Thank you.
We've got to the five minutes.
Finished. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought Siri's was a nice town. You know what they were saying to me? "You're not in San Mateo now." I guess not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the council on a non-agenda item?
Lee Brandt. I just wanted to say what a great night we had the other night at the Hundred Year Gala. Recreation just did a tremendous job in supporting our cause, and there was a few of you that were there, and it was just a great, great night. And we just really enjoyed it, and I just want to thank you guys for letting us have the facility and blah, blah, blah. Okay? Sorry, Toby, didn't mean to take your...
Is there anyone else? Okay. We will bring it back. We have no appointments to boards and commissions this evening. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the 13 consent calendar items or one new business item? Okay. Hearing none, we'll bring it back to the council and move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like to have a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
5C.
Okay. Who requested 5C? Mr. Donaldson? Okay. I will look for direction from the council on the other items.
Move to approve 1, 2, 3, 4, A, B, and D, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember De Rosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 401.
Okay. Mr. Donaldson, if you want to come up and ask your question, it's General Correspondence, Recreation Monthly Report for February 2018.
Hello. Good afternoon. Don Donaldson. Parks and Recreation, I read in the paper that we're not going to get that boat dock out there at the soccer fields. Is that affirmative? I got a canoe, and I go down to Fox Grove, and now it's not going to be... I'm just, Parks and Recreation, I'm just a little bit upset because I hear the baseball down there, George Costas Field are having massive, massive problems. Football, Pop Warner Football, people taken, I don't know, and I know it's just hearsay, but it's just, every person that I've talked to, every person that I've talked to has got something bad to say about almost every program in Siri's. And we've lost the Siri's Dolphins. We've lost, and I can't, I don't understand it. I really don't understand it. I don't, is there any person that takes care, do we have a committee that takes care of this money for these people? I know Mr. Lang works for a person, and she was donating ad machines to the, and they didn't want it. They didn't want them ad machines. Why wouldn't you want an ad machine at the end of the night? You could just hit the button, and you've got a total. You're selling candy, $5, and if you don't want to sell it, you get, you get... I don't understand this, Chris. I'm just dumbfounded about the things that's going on for these kids. We get them into something, and then there it goes. The Smyrna Park. It's pathetic out there even. Where's the kids? I'm not taking my granddaughter down to Smyrna Park. I go around and find other parks to take my granddaughter down. What is going on? Do we have an answer for, I'm dumbfounded, Chris. I spent 34 years in my program. If you want to know any time, any date, any year that I coached there, I'll bring in the papers for you.
Don, the...
I know.
This is, was there something on the staff report? Because that's what we're taking action on. Was there something on the staff report regarding the recreation department that you had a question or issue on? That's what you asked to be polled.
The park out there that has the boat dock, it was, I think, Mr. De Rosset's in charge of that out there. Is that not going to happen?
First of all, I'm not sure about that question, but I don't know that it was identified...
Well, that's Parks and Recreation, isn't it?
I'm not sure if it was identi... Where in the report is...
It's not identified. That's a general report for an information on a month. You're referring to the boat dock at the Lower River Bluff?
Yes.
That project is ongoing, under design, and is scheduled to be under construction this summer. Not an item as part of this agenda item. It's not even referenced.
I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on this item? Okay. I'll bring it back to the council for direction. Move to adopt, approve 5C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember De Rosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 401.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business, no public hearing. We have one new business item, Resolution Number 2018-31, approving the updated 2018 Design Standards for Construction of Public Improvements. Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every now and then, we need to update our standards with the city. Unfortunately, we haven't updated a full update since 1997, which was a few years back, same year that we approved our last general plan. So, while Tom's pushing hard and heavy for the general plan, we're trying to get our city engineering department up to speed as well with the new standards. A lot of things have changed in 20 years, as you can imagine. Technology is not what it was 20 years ago. Lots of examples in our standards pertaining to that. Streetlights, we used to use high-pressure sodium bulbs in our streetlights. We're now moving to LEDs, 80% efficiency upgrade, lower maintenance fees or costs for our Public Works Department. Sewer, new materials are available, corrosive resistant materials with piping, lighter, lightweight pipes for construction purposes that have been approved by different agencies. The water department, as you can imagine, Jeremy's installed, I think he told me the magic number, was it 16,000 water meters? Yeah. Quite a few water meters there in town now that weren't installed in 1997, also with the wireless technology that he can control those and manage those from Public Works Department. Those have all been incorporated within the city and within our new standards, and that equipment is always evolving. Jeremy's always looking at what's the latest technology out there to help make his job easier and make it more efficient, more accurate for different constituents within the community. Landscaping, as you know, with the drought that's gone on, new drought standards have come out that we've had to incorporate drought tolerant types of trees and what have you, and how we handle the different plantings of those, and how we handle the storm runoff as well in the engineering field, which Mr. Viera has to deal with on a day-to-day basis. No longer can it run off into the streets. It has to be contained within the yards. State mandates across the board, street monumentation, storm runoff criteria, different clean water criteria that we have to deal with, that we have to address with our standards. And then, just the industry standard updates, OSHA, American Water Works Association that Jeremy works with all the time, ASTM, who tests all the materials used, whether it's concrete, steel, plastics, you name it. They're reviewed and approved on a continual basis that we have to specify in our plans and make sure they're up to date. We've added a few new standards, like trash enclosures, which we hadn't had before, so that'll be a little bit easier for the people coming to develop within our community, make that easier for them. And the approach we took was that we looked at the Stanislaw Standards, City Modesto Standards, City Trulock Standards, and our own, and we tried to incorporate what was good about those other communities into our own and to improve what we have and make a better standard that our local contractors could use and throughout our whole county, and hopefully keep our costs down and our local contractors busy. But it's taken us a few years. Toby started pushing this when he was here, and we finally got it over the finish line here, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have tonight.
Okay. Are there any questions? I do have one. I do have one question. I'm looking in here, and then, for root-bearing trees, tree stakes and stuff like that, if you plant a tree in a private citizen's yard, do you put in the drainage or the water system pipe where the, so the roots would go deeper, or is that just for city parks?
That's the city standard for everything. It's the root barrier up next to the concrete walkways, the wells on both sides of the tree. That's a city standard across the board, whether it's a right-of-way, a park, or in front of a residential home.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, you do that in somebody's yard?
Correct. If we remove a city tree, at some point, when we, you know, funding comes available to us, we will go back and replant a city tree, and when we do that, we use those standards.
Because we haven't done that in the past?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the one city tree that would be on, in the right-of-way component of somebody's front yard. If it's somebody's private tree, then no, but...
I understand.
Right-of-way tree would be the tree that would be planted at the standard. That's the purpose of getting that standard in place so that it has the best chance of growth and proper growth that doesn't damage sidewalks and curb the gutters.
Any other question? Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for doing this. As you have identified, I deal with this on a number of jurisdictions around there, and I'm not going to name which ones are out there because Tom's associated with some of them. It's very frustrating and discouraging when we go to work. My firm goes to work in jurisdictions, and the standards are all over the board. Some were adopted 10 years ago, some 20 years ago. You designed what they tell you to, and then they come back and they change their mind, but they have nothing that they've adopted, and they have no rhyme or reason, and it makes it very frustrating for all the people doing it. So, I can appreciate you taking, I know it's a big undertaking, and although I'm not doing any work here, I can appreciate you doing that. So, with that, I'll open it up to the public to see if there was anyone that would like to comment on the updating of the 2018 Design Standards for Construction of Public Improvements. Okay. Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction. Move to adopt Resolution 2018-031.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember De Rosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 401.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay. Hearing none, reports, I have nothing to report. Councilmember Rhino?
I'd like to thank Ms. Dean and her staff for another outstanding audit. I mean, that was, one of the things that I really appreciate is that we don't have to worry because we know we're always going to have the outstanding audit, so I really appreciate that. And the other thing was that we went to the Centennial Gala, and just like Mr. Brandt said, Recreation did a fantastic job, but the whole affair was really, really, really very nice. It was all put together nice, and it was an amazing turnout. And that's all I have.
Okay. Vice Mayor Klein?
So, I don't sit here and repeat everything. I do agree with Councilmember Rhino on all points, going through the budget and see where we are. We finished up 2017. You know, it makes us as a council very aware and appreciative of the work that you and your staff do.[1717.91]
Okay, hearing none. Reports, I have nothing to report. Councilmember Rhino?
I'd like to thank Ms. Dean and her staff for another outstanding audit. I mean, that was, one of the things that I really appreciate is that we don't have to worry, because we know we're always going to have the outstanding audit, so I really appreciate that. And the other thing was that we went to the Centennial Gala, and just like Mr. Brant said, Recreation did a fantastic job, but the whole affair was really, really, really very nice. It was all put together nice, and it was an amazing turnout. And that's all I have.
Okay. Vice Mayor Klein? So I don't sit here and repeat everything. I do agree with Councilmember Rhino on all points, going through the budget, and see where we are. We finished up 2017, you know, it makes us as a council very aware and appreciative of the work that you and your staff do. The Centennial Gala was great. I think that the committee did a fantastic job, and it was well worth it and well attended. Okay. Councilor DeRocset?
I'll disagree with both. Perfect. It was awesome. A lot of people, 282 people, is that correct, give or take? Yeah. And your guys' outfits that night looked great, by the way.
Okay. Ms. Dean? Tom?
Attorney Mayor.
DeWalls?
Just to echo those comments, the fantastic job of Suzanne and her staff for getting the audit done, and it wasn't, I know she would like it had done sooner, and she beat on the auditors pretty regularly to get them to get their part done, it wasn't on our staff's part, and then also to the Brants, and a special thank you to Lisa Montero Moore and the efforts that she put in to pull off the gala. It took a team, but she was definitely doing more than her share of pushing and pulling to get that pulled off, so I definitely want to give her our thanks for an event that went far beyond any of the committee's probably wildest dreams when we started. Took us probably about six months to get to that concept, and then we were all pretty scared, I think, that we were going to be able to pull it off and raise money, and last count, we're probably nearing double our original goal, so we'll be able to have a really, really nice little plaza monument that we're working on. So, again, just a great effort by everyone that was involved, and especially Lisa.
Tom?
The EIR comment period for the general plan ended today at 5 o'clock. We got about 10 letters, the Office of Planning and Research from the state, they wrote that out to their agencies, we'll probably get their package of comment letters probably in the next day or so. Hopefully, we'll have the Planning Commission hearing for the certification of the EIR adoption of the general plan in late April, and then to the city council in May.
Great. Daryl? Brant? Rick? Jeremy? Okay, with that, I think we will adjourn to our closed, excuse me, we will move to closed session, conference with labor negotiator, and then we'll be, there won't be anything to report out from that at that time, Tom. So from there, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Monday, April 9, 2018. Thank you.